She may come past you.
I didn't want to get your blood pressure.
We need to dig it, don't we? Where's your costume? And did you say I came dressed as my evil twin? Tomorrow is Saturday. Oh, Saturday. This is my Friday.
Saturday.
You know I know.
All right, I think we are ready to get the regular meeting of the Emory Unified School District Board going. Could we have a roll call, please?
Member Ash?
Here.
Member Collins Rogers?
Here.
Member Marion?
Here.
Member Pats?
Here.
President Affell?
Here. Please rise for the pledge. All right, do we have public comment on any items not on our agenda tonight? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Naomi Almraz. I have a third grader here at Annie Yates Elementary School. And I just wanted to share my comments and my thoughts about the importance of having a school resource officer or a security officer on the Annie Yates side of the campus, particularly after the near kidnapping attempt that happened right after school, across the street from the school. It's also kind of somewhat of a challenge when I come to the school during school hours to pick up my daughter, and I don't have access to the door. It's happened two or three different times where I've had to come in, and I've called the phone number on the sheet that's posted outside, and there's been no answer. So fortunately, people have been walking by, rec leaders or employees, and they've been able to come out to open the door. So I feel it's kind of frustrating if there's a notice there and it's instructing us to call these two phone numbers, and for whatever reason, the office staff isn't available and we're getting voicemail. And I just can only imagine if it's an emergency kind of situation and there isn't someone there to answer the phone. And I'm wondering if there's any way that we can partner with either the city or with the PTO organization to find the funds to have a security officer that's there at the door, or kind of in that open area, that can be focused on the doors and can assist any parent that may need to come onto the campus during school hours. I also wanted to share some, I wasn't aware of this until last week, I was speaking with another parent that's in my daughter's classroom, and she said that at times when she's been here in the mornings after the kids have gone into classes, she has seen people access the doors through the, I guess the kind of the openings, the grills there, and little hands can get in and kind of prop the door open. So I wasn't sure if that's something that the administrators and the board is aware of, and how maybe we can work on remedying that situation, since we have that designed throughout the entire campus and with the many door points. Maybe that's something that can be looked into and addressed if you're not aware of it, or if you are, how we can partner with you guys to figure that out.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you said two different things, or I heard two different things, so I just want to clarify. Are you asking for a security guard on campus, or are you asking for a police officer, which would be called an SRO on campus?
I'm open to both. Obviously, there's two different roles for a security guard and a school resource officer. I do think that a school resource officer is a good option during the pickup and the drop-off times, because I've noticed that when we opened the school site, there was a nice presence of Emeryville Police around the perimeter. And now that, you know, we're kind of back to normal and it's business as usual, there are still a lot of parents that are not using the roundabout, they're using the fire lane driveway to turn around, and that's causing traffic and backup on 53rd for those parents that are turning from San Pablo. So I'm conscious that in SRO, I think people would respond to the badge versus a security officer that, you know, doesn't have the same rights and privileges as a police officer would.
Thank you.
Okay, other public comment?
Hello, my name is Diane Mack, and I am the PTO president. And tonight, I will actually be speaking as one. I also have two boys in the school. We, I wanted to kind of give you guys a report on some of the fun things that we've been doing this year. We've been creating a pretty awesome group since last year. We did some great fundraising, so we have a little bit of money to work with at the beginning of the school year. We've been able to support a lot of our new teachers with books, we've been able to offer cash prizes for, for instance, our door decorating contest for the Harvest Festival and different things, and we're trying to make sure that the money that we make, we get it into the classrooms. But in order to, but wanting to further that, we did a harvest celebration today, instead of the traditional Harvest Festival with the kids, with the games and everything that's always slated right after school on Wednesdays, the half-day, which is fun, but it's always been an extremely chaotic event. So we thought trying to make it a little less chaotic, but the kids still get to wear their costumes to school, would be really fun. And we had a lot of really wonderful planning and wonderful volunteers going, you know, above and beyond, and many hours, and it looked great. The kids looked great, so adorable. A lot of people participated, there were parents there, teachers were there supporting, the rec center leaders were there supporting. We had the high school band playing, we had the cheerleaders help us out and cheer on the students when we did the costume contest, and it was a really, a real community event, and it was completely awesome. And we did it out here in the courtyard. But for all that planning, we had a communication problem. Our PA system, our little tiny PA system, could only reach maybe an eighth of the group, and it's the very front. So what the, what we planned couldn't work because no one could hear. And I'm a bit of a perfectionist, I admit, and so I'm running around trying to get people to, you know, move and come over here, and I want you to, you know, we're trying to have the parade right here, and then we're going to do an inner circle so everyone can see. I even had coffee and tea set up on the balcony for the parents with signs going up there so that they could see their kids and the whole event. We, no one could hear anything. We couldn't hear the announcements, all of that. I would love to work together, because, you know, we're going to be here to support it, and hopefully, we can earmark a fundraiser for it or something, but work together to find a system that will reach from one end to the other, that will also help with their Friday morning assemblies that they have every week. We couldn't do it out on the football field because the sound system wouldn't reach either, and we can't get power in the middle of the field in order to do the parade out there unless you have a very long extension cord. So, and we searched, we partnered with Stacy from the city, and we were all over the field and all over everywhere, and that's why we chose to do it here. So while I don't want this to end on a negative note, I just feel like that there is a, there's an opportunity for this, and so many parents also on a, you know, to partner with this, because it's, it all goes with communication, getting the word out about anything about the school, about events, about emergencies, you know, fun things, important things, school things, for both high school and for the K through eight, is extremely difficult, we all know that. We've, our success lately has been texting, everyone looks at a text. And so our last meeting, we had 30 people show up to our PTO meeting, which is wonderful. That's a great number of parents to come in, parents and teachers, excuse me. It's because we used a mass texting service, and we got everyone, and we did it that afternoon, and it was wonderful. And people were like, "Oh, text, I love that, so much better than email." Okay, great. So we came up with that solution. But for all the texting and emailing and everything that we do, the way that parents get most of the information from what I've been getting and polling is word of mouth, which is crazy. And that word of mouth is when they see signs outside when they're dropping off their kids or coming in and out of the school. So here is my other attempt, and I've actually approached Dr. Rubio about it before, and so, you know, you know this is on my agenda, but this goes, and this is for the entire campus, we need a marquee, we need something out there in order to talk about what is happening with our schools. And it's extremely important. It would partner with our event today so that all the parents knew, except for, you know, the flyers and the backpacks, it just, it reaches a very small percentage. They would know all the details they need to know. And, and they would come, and all the different things that we're doing are harvest in the park, which is harvest in the gym.
You're out of time.
Anyway, it would help with all of our activities and everything for the students and teachers.
Sorry, just because Ms. Mack, will you follow up on me, because I, two of those three, I can connect you to pretty fast, because I just purchased some new equipment for the K-8, so you might not know that, so.
Perfect.
If you follow up on me, I can help with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Mr. Davis, can you let Ms. Jeter go? She, she had her hand up. Cool.
Good afternoon, I want to say thank you for being able to listen to me at this time. I'm going to read something I just would like for you to listen, it's a lot. I'm a parent, I have two kids at Annie Yates. My daughter's been going here since she was in kindergarten, she's now in the sixth grade. I have a son here, he's in the third grade, and I have a nephew here, he's in the second grade. Last year, when we were at Annie Yates, we had a problem with a particular parent. I went to the principal, the principal directed me to Dr. Rubio, Dr. Rubio did as much as he could to fix the problem, and that was last year. This year, the problem is back. I have an adult that is targeting my child, and I feel, let me, I need to read, I need to read. I have an adult that is targeting my child, she also has parents that attend Annie Yates. The first time she was dealt with, with Dr. Rubio, now it's over again. She's spreading nasty rumors about my child, she's gone as far as to standing in front of the classroom talking about my child when my child is in the classroom next to her. I'm doing as much as I can to restrain myself to let the process work. I'm coming to the board to see what is it that the board can do about this situation, since I've went through the chain of which I was supposed to go to through to protect my child. There's been a lot going on between that parent and my child that I don't feel comfortable with my child here by himself. There's also been a fight on campus with an adult that was also linked to this situation. I feel that a person that is not invested in Annie Yates or the ECCL as a whole should not be on our campus. It's like poison. We can't get new parents if we have this one parent targeting the new parents telling them, oh, how bad this school is supposed to be, but you still have kids here. I'm kind of skimming through this. So I came to you guys just basically saying what the issue is, which is, I feel that my child is being targeted by another parent. This has been occurring since last year. Dr. Rubio has done, has dealt with it at one point, and now it's happening again. I'm trying to reframe and restrain myself to make sure that I go through the right protocol for my child, to make sure that my child is safe at school and gets education here at Annie Yates since he's been since kindergarten. I'm just asking that the board, please take a look at this matter so that we don't have something big happen. It's like one thing after another, and it's building, building, building. And it's, it's becoming a really bad problem when I don't feel comfortable with my own child being in his classroom. So that, that's it in a nutshell, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jeter.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Good evening. I have no ETA, this is a thank you that I put out there, and I want to thank Member Ash on behalf of teachers, on behalf of the Teachers Association, for going out and registering as a write-in candidate. Teachers are spoken, very aware of what you, what you've meant, and they are supportive, so we all thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Susan Donaldson, I am the PTO Vice President and also a parent of a third grader. I would like to second Diane's comments about the facility or techno, IT technical sound system needs, but maybe they're being to be answered. The PA system has been, seems, has been a problem for years, and particularly with this new sort of state of the, we have so many other wonderful state-of-the-art things that hopefully, there can be some new sound system out there. It's a great, it's a great space, I've heard a lot of people be really positive about the space for community events and school events, and it would be even more awesome if you could hear everything that's happening there. The marquee, I'm a huge supporter of the marquee, so hopefully that's coming, I mean, between football games and weekend community events and choir events, of talking to Mr. Ting about a winter concert that's coming up, all kinds of things that I think, just in general, as a, as a community person that lives here, to be able to drive down San Pablo like so many people do and see a sign that says there's a winter concert, and that's, that's the kind of stuff that makes a community a great place to live. So I think for sure, a marquee or some sort of massive communication system would be great. I think that there are some things, I just have sort of a random list of items that I'll share. The water fountains, I know that that has been probably on the top of some people's minds, the water fountains situation outside, the kids, the, most of the water fountains outside don't work, and so the kids come inside to use the water fountain, which is completely cuckoo, because the water fountains are sort of in past the office. So when they're outside, they come in, and it's really crazy. So if some more attention could be put on the outside water fountains, I think that would help the front office and then just sort of management of the kids in a big way. I have heard a couple people, in addition to talking about the gates, the confusion and the frustration over not being able to get into the gates. It would be great to know, I don't know what the long-term plan of that is, I just keep assuming that there's something that's going to happen that just hasn't happened yet, that the, that the high school has a buzzer, I hear the high school has a buzzer that functions, and so I'm just sort of assume that we'll have a buzzer, but I'm not really sure. So if we could know what that long-term plan is, that would be great, because people ask me all the time about that. And, and then also, in terms, along with that, of the entrances, I know that there have been a lot of parents that enter through the high school, K-8 parents that enter through the high school in the morning, just mostly for convenience sake, that they're, they're coming from that side of town, and they enter through the high school also because they're going to the cafeteria for breakfast. So I don't, I don't know if the, all the San Pablo gates are open in the morning, but if the gate is open by the, by the, by the library, that's closer to the cafeteria, you know, if we could tell people, oh, that, that gate is open, and you can go in the, the library gate, which then kind of leads right in here to the cafeteria, maybe that's a solution that we can tell people about too, if we don't want them entering through the high school, because a lot of them are entering through the high school, and I know the high school's been complaining about that. And I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donaldson. Other public comments, items not on our agenda? Okay, thank you all for, for those. We're on to reports, do we have a, an ETA report? Nope, okay. CSCA report?
Superintendent's report? Yes, good evening. I'll include a couple of things I wasn't planning in my report, that's hopefully be helpful, and I'm sure the ladies will, if you don't mind, we can connect next week if you don't mind. We did recently, and it just arrived, I'm sorry that you didn't know this, we did recently purchase a new sound system for the K-8, it probably arrived about three days ago, and it's probably in a box sitting in there. But, so that would be something you might want to follow up with, so I would let the board know that we, we recognized previously there was a problem with the sound system, we just purchased something, so I want to make sure the parents know that, so thank you for bringing it up. We had some additional training this week on the gates and the software system, because we can program any gate with one of the card readers, we can program the time it locks, unlocks, but we do need additional signage, we need to publicize that timing. The 53rd Street Gate, for example, I believe, and I think in part because of Kinder Buddies, I believe it's open, although it looks, it's closed, but it's unlocked until probably 9:30, I believe, I'm not certain, and then the system locks it. But without that signage, it makes it confusing. The San Pablo Gate is always open for people to access the city lobby to be let through, but we need to get that information out. So I'll go ahead and get that out to you, and then we are starting this year to use a new system, which you may know for email to parents. I've used it a few times called Constant Contact, and Ms. Lang and I actually had a conversation about giving some of you access to her credentials, if you want to use that as another way to communicate with families. So we just had that conversation this afternoon. I'd also like to say, I thought the Harvest Festival was great, so thank you. By the way, it was so nice to see all the different components of the community, the school band, the teachers, the city staff, the parents and the kids together, so thank you, it was a great example of what the center, I think, is meant to do, so I appreciate your work on that. I'd like to update the board that I met this week with the new president of Berkeley City College, and it was great to spend some time with her, and we came up with some exciting ideas for courses, Berkeley Extension Courses here on-site in the evenings, maybe English for Parents, and so she's very excited that we want to do that, and I think it's perfect because it again exemplifies what we can do for the community, so we're going to follow up again with Berkeley City College. I will be out of town tomorrow and Friday with the superintendent of Berkeley Unified, who I've invited to join our partnership with Yale University. So at this time of year, the board, you may recall that we're typically there with the other school districts around the country, we have a partnership with Yale University, who offers summer training on curriculum, curriculum development with our teachers, and we've had a number of teachers go through that, and they have, they have access to Yale's private resources and private collection to create their curricular units. So I will be there on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, along with Berkeley Unified, their superintendent, who we have invited. And my last part of my update tonight is, I have, we have added, working with Ms. Lang, we've added some additional support to the first grade classrooms, we'll be adding some additional support time to give them some support. I know some parents came at the last board meeting to ask if there was anything we could do, and we've been able to figure out a way to add some more support. That's it, thank you.
I just have a quick question. The information that you give out to the parents about the gates and where they can enter, if, if, at least I could get a copy.
Sure.
I have multiple parents who have asked me the same question.
Yeah.
And expressed some frustration about not being allowed to enter through the high school. I would like to be able to share how they should be going.
Got it. Sounds good. I will do it. Sure.
That'd be great. If you could circulate that to the whole board. Thanks. The only item on the board president's report was a similar thank you to the PTO for very good and fun Harvest Festival today, it was very spirited, and I think more than an eighth of the people there heard what was going on. But it didn't, you know, stretch all the, all the way through the grass, no, didn't, didn't go, so I'm happy to know we have a new system that hopefully will be much better. But I, yeah, I know it's a lot of work putting that together, I thought the band was fantastic, real excellent addition, and Mr. Salvatore, once again, and his students, did a great job, so. And the cheerleaders this year, that was, that was a new twist too, so yeah, it was really great.
I failed to mention one other thing, tonight's the first night, I think, we're using our cafeteria tables as seating. So these are our new cafeteria tables that, actually a reversible seating that we can use, and it's helpful to the custodians not to put out 50 chairs, so I forgot to mention that.
All right, we are on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that anyone would like to pull from the consent calendar?
Yes, I'd like to pull item 5.1 and 5.3, if possible.
Okay. Do we have a motion, hearing nothing else, do we have a motion to adopt 5.2 and 5.4?
On the approval.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Collins Rogers?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Affell?
Yes. So the motion on to approve 5.2 and 5.4 passes unanimously. Item 5.1, warrants.
I have two items pertaining to the warrants, one being the, there's a line item for the Consolidated Engineering Lab, I know that's the testing lab for the specific or the inspection for the construction of the ECCL, but my question is, is that we should have been done with the majority of the inspection months ago, and I don't know where this bill lands in the schedule as far as payment. And then the other one is the, the Ross McDonald Company, who is that?
I think I can answer the second one, I might need Mr. Baker's help on the first. Ross McDonald, I believe, if memory serves correct, is the manufacturer and company for all the library furniture.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Mr. Baker's walking up the one workplace, is that?
That is also, that, that's the.
Furniture or the screens?
That is all furniture.
All furniture.
Yeah, that was part of the $400,000, I think, that we planned on.
Okay.
In regard to CEL, the testing lab, if you recall, I'm thinking it was about three or four months ago, we had some additional testing approved for things like pool, et cetera. Some of those invoices are coming through now, and that's why those are coming through latter, latter part of the period. We did have quite a bit of testing for the site concrete, concrete strength testing, so there are some things, I think they have one more invoice that's coming up, and they'll, they'll be complete after that.
Just a question pertaining to that, what last time, one of the last items you said as far as testing the concrete paving, normally that isn't done, except if it's elevated or.
Frankly, I could, if I looked at the invoice, I could, I could give you a little more clarity, I'm not sure which one it is.
Additional cost for that is just superfluous, it's not required, so why do it? So that's, you know, it's kind of.
I think most of it is, if you recall, when we took the, the board item to the board about additional testing, it was to a max. We've continued to negotiate with them to, to take things out that we think we should not be charged for, and so some of these invoices are being resolved late in the game, that's really what's taking place.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this item? Do we have a motion on the warrants?
So moved, second.
Roll call?
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Collins Rogers?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Affell?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously, warrants are approved. On to item 5.3, personnel actions.
Good evening. We're hiring a third playground cafeteria monitor for the Annie Yates site because of the size of the student body and the need, just for more management, more oversight. And this is a position that was approved this past summer in August, late in August.
Great, I wanted to hear that. Thank you.
And it doesn't look like our new hire is present with us tonight?
Not this evening.
Okay. Can you tell us anything about Mr. Marley?
Mr. Marley is presently working with the City Recreation Department, and he applied for the. Mr. Marley is presently working with the City Recreation Department and he applied for the position. And just based upon his work already within the district, he was identified and interviewed as the ideal candidate.
Okay, all right. Do we have a, any public comment on this item? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Collins Rogers?
Yes.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
Member Patz?
Yes.
President Athol?
Yes. Personnel actions passes unanimously and we're on to our discussion and action items. Want to introduce the first item, Superintendent?
Sure, thank you. We have Mr. John Baker here tonight with Swinerton and to give us our ECL update. Thank you also Turner Construction for being here tonight, appreciate you listening in.
Good evening. The update for September tonight, most of it, this is all related to project closeout and completion. If we need to reference, I think everyone now knows which buildings are which. I've used for two years this diagram, but I think we don't, probably don't need it too much anymore. In terms of final completion, which is where, what we are geared for right now, the gates and fencing are now complete. I think there's some operational issues that we were, were discussed here earlier. However, all of the, the, the painting is done except for some, some painting punch list items. The dampers to minimize the noise are now installed, all the gates. The planting and landscaping punch list, there are only a few items remaining. All the ceiling fans are now in, the DSA seismic issue has been, was, was approved a couple of weeks ago by DSA. Canopy 53rd Street is done. The power and data outlets, I think we've got all, most of those issues solved. And then punch list completion. Punch list completion, we only have about, about 25 items left. We anticipate being able to recommend-
How many originally?
There were 3,000 and now we're down to 25. I think we'll be able to have the architects issue the notice of final completion this week. That's what we, the goal we set was the end of October and then the warranty period will commence. I think there's a little bit of, you'll see some evening work taking place, but that's, we're really pretty much done. What's really left on the punch list is most of the painting items here and there. And then, you know, then we'll, then we'll be, we'll be complete, we have our closeout documents largely in. And then the only other work that will be remaining from the original project is the Walhalla. It'll be taking place around the end of the year and then the City Art Program installation. We talked about a number of design issues last, last week and these are still ongoing. We're having ongoing discussions with the architect about these. The concrete at the entry to Building C was repaired and now we no longer have that step, was, was replaced. You'll see that step that was theirs now at the entry to anti-yates. The concrete steps now have some painting at the, at the nosings of those to create more safety. And we're still working on a solution to the cracked concrete at the Building C and Building D decks and where DSK is putting forth another proposal to repair that. We're working with our hardware, our Keen contractor, Rex Keen, to change some door hardware and locks so that we can have some, some double doors here in Building C, not locked and work better for exiting. We're looking at solving the west end of the field where it slopes down, maybe doing some storage area there. And then the main thing is, is that if there are any design issues which come up, those need to be transmitted to the superintendent so that we can track those and discuss those with the architect. Let's see here. You know, actually Lisa, this is last month's report, not the October report. There, I apologize, I queued the wrong one up. There we go, sorry folks. You'll notice actually for two years we've had the rendering of the, of the facility, now we have photograph, photograph on the, on the front piece. Again, we talked about these items. I do want to talk about some things that are issues. The doorstops, we've had a number of those fail. We're in the process of looking through the documents and working on a solution to replace those with floor stops. So there'll be, so the doors will not hit those doorstops and then break the sheet rock. That's kind of one of the biggest issues we've had. We're going to replace and put doorstops, floor stops that are on the floor so those doors, the floor, the walls won't be damaged.
And, and repair the walls.
And repair the walls, of course. The concrete steps, we're going to do, Turner has offered at no cost to take a couple of these trip hazards out. One of them here from the grass area towards the K-38 school, they're going to cut that out and lower that, so that won't be a trip hazard. And they've offered to do that at no cost to, to fix some of those items. You know, this is again the entry to anti-yates, which I mentioned earlier. We've taken that step out, so there's no longer a step there. And we do have some issues with the canopies on rain days and when we had some rains recently, we noticed that there are, you'll see the blue sky there, that when it rains, some rain comes, the canopy doesn't catch it and we get rain coming at the, at the entry to Building D. We discussed this again with DSK to see if there might be a, a low-cost solution to mitigating that. Similar to the canopy between the high school in the background and Building E, it's pretty narrow, so when you get wind-driven rain, basically if you're walking down that path, that canopy doesn't do a whole lot. So we've asked DSK to look at some of these. We have probably half a dozen design issues that we've asked them to look into, kind of explain the history. But again, any, any design issues, I know that some of the, the teachers have brought this attention, should go to Dr. Rubio so that we can track these and see if there might be some solutions that we can come up with. This is the cracked concrete at, at, at the Building C deck, again-
And do you pause there?
Sure.
So what does that mean in terms of completions and punch lists and who's going to do what?
In terms of completions and punch lists, we're closing the Turner contract out. There are things-
So that's, that's with Turner?
Correct.
So the design issue is something like the canopy's too narrow. Say the architect says, well, we can add these things on either side somehow that are going to vastly improve that. Is that something that they take care of? Are they going to add?
So, so far, DSK has been willing to propose some solutions at no additional cost, at least to discuss those. Like with any facility, when you open a facility, there are things that might not be working quite right. But we, the, the key thing here is to have a process where those are communicated to the superintendent. We then collect those items and we've been meeting with Mark Cyberlick every couple of weeks to talk about those things. And, and they've, they've offered to propose some, some solutions or some, some fixes that we, that the district may want to consider.
I, I guess my concern, and I don't know if this is where President Athol was heading, but it is, this is a new process to me. It's my first time going through this and it just feels kind of awkward and I, I get worried because seeing this and how narrow it is, and I know it's not on Swinerton, it's not on Turner, it's really a design issue, and watching, watching the rain just come right in and the kids are going to get, anytime it rains, they're going to get wet, right? So it's the one part of the campus where this idea doesn't work. It seems that at this point, when an architect maybe gets something wrong or one of their subcontractors gets something wrong, there's not a lot we can do outside of finding out what the redesign is, finding out what the additional costs are for the design and additional costs to change it, I guess, right?
Right, right.
Okay.
Again, DSK's looking at a solution for the concrete, which is cracking of the decks. They came up with, they've come up with a couple of ideas that I think won't, won't, won't work quite well, but that's ongoing. But that's just, that's, there, we've kind of gotten down to just a handful of items that really, that we're having them look at but we're having ongoing discussions with them to see if there's some, some ways that we can fix those things. In terms of closeout, right now we are in the throes of the final change of our negotiation with Turner. Those include concrete design issues, the site utility resequencing, which is very complex, but we're getting near to finishing that up. Changes to the site gates and fencing, final soil off-haul for soil which had to be taken to a, a landfill and also Saturday work. So those five items are going to be coming up to the board at the, at the November meeting. But I think those are the only items we need to bring to the board, but we're in the process of negotiating all of those. Punch list again is, we've got about 25 items left. Once we get, I think that, again, DSK has got the, is doing the back checking of that. But I, but again, I believe we'll meet our goal of reaching final completion at the end of this month, which is Friday. Building systems training is now complete. We're doing some retraining that the district has asked for at no cost to make sure that everyone is proficient in those systems. All of the operations and maintenance manuals are now in and Ron Vos is sort of the keeper of those along with city staff. Warranties and guarantees, those are all in and have been approved. The ASBIL documents have been submitted, have been approved by the inspectors of record, that's the key, the key, the key reviewer there. Again, during the warranty period, if, if there are things in those ASBIL documents that we find to be missing, Turner has an obligation to make sure that those are up to date. The DSA documentation is all complete, there's only one, we have, there are five DSA permits. Those will all be, those are all closed out, I think, two are closed out, two more this week and there's only one we're leaving open, which is for the Walhalla. We need to leave that permit open until the Walhalla is installed. And then again, final completion, we are, the, the date that we've got on our draft certificate is for Friday, the 28th and that commences the two-year warranty period. We've also talked to the city and the district about how the warranty period works. Basically what happens is that there's a person at Turner who will field those inquiries and they will, they are required by contractors to respond within 30 days. And in some cases, the district may work directly with a subcontractor, in some case Turner will do that, but Turner will field all those questions and, and then be in charge of making sure those repairs are made. I want to point out something that's important is that even if there was something that was missed on the punch list that comes up during that two-year period, as long as it's in Turner's contract scope, it has to be repaired. So if you've got a, and if you've got things like a door handle that fails a year and a half from now, they've got to fix that. They've got to come back and fix things as long as that warranty period proceeds. And we've been working with city and district staff to, to kind of talk about how that process works.
And I think I understand it, if I might ask, so I was leaving yesterday and noticed we have another area where the water pools up here where the high school kids eat, the first section, so it was like a lake and it's still wet from over a day ago. So if we, if, because I'm not going through room to room inspecting every room, although I want to right now. So if we find things like that, we call someone to Turner.
That is correct, that's correct.
All right.
Dr. Rubio, I do want to add is that I will volunteer my time to do a walkthrough and to give you my notes on the site as well. With my experience as a school architect, I've seen numerous things that have caught my eye and I want to bring those to attention to the powers that be. So you'll see some report on, on that in future board meeting, if not sooner.
Thank you, that's great.
That's great, thank you.
Excellent.
And that's the report for this month.
Can, can you say anything about the water fountains that we heard about earlier?
Yeah, that's actually the first I've heard of that and I want to make sure that gets on our list. There were a couple of fountains that we knew weren't working, but apparently that's a larger, it sounds like it's a larger problem that, that I was aware of, but I will make sure that we talk to Turner about that tomorrow.
Okay, so yeah, can you go around and check the-
Yeah.
All the fountains?
And I don't think it's on the punch list either, so I'll make sure that we get, take care of that.
One other question, I'm sorry, Mr. Baker. When we close out the project, does that mean the punch list is, for the, for the current punch list is done and we don't do it until that time or is it too late to add, I mean?
No, so serious, that works, is that, that, that the best practice really is when you only have a handful of punch list items, if you, if you drag those on, for one thing, are, we need to close out the insurance, then construction insurance, that's the main thing. We'll have a handful of items left, probably like a, you know, a dozen. Those will become warranty items and then new items you identify that you would normally go on a punch list, they become warranty items. And those are conveyed to Turner and they have an obligation to repair those.
Thank you.
Mr. Baker, could you provide a list of those to the board as far as outstanding punch list items?
Sure.
And the, I don't know if cheer department or superintendent's about the gates, the buzzers, the cameras out there to get people in and out?
We, our first roadblock was the, we purchased a device from Home Depot, which I think is called a Ring, R-I-N-G, I think homeowners use it at their homes as well, has a camera and a buzzer. The county was blocking the web address for that, so they saw it as spam or something, so we've got that fixed. So I just texted Alex, our IT guy, when the, the parents were speaking to find out where are we at, why isn't it working yet? So we're going to go ahead and make sure we get that set up with signage as well.
But that's the plan.
That's the plan, yes. The original plan was that everyone would come through the city lobby and the city asked us to reconsider that because they weren't sure they could handle the flow of parents, so. And we weren't sure it was the most convenient way, way to go, so we've changed that just as we're moving in.
Okay, so do you have a sense of approximately?
My guess would be at least about a week.
Okay, and then people will be able to come, there'll be a buzzer and they'll get buzzed in or-
That's correct. And, and we'll talk to the front office about figuring out how do we make sure that happens and doesn't fall off to a ringing telephone.
Because if someone's not there at the phone, answering the phone, then they might not be there at the buzzer.
That's right, I, I need to double check what phone that's ringing to because the office probably can't distinguish that. Yeah, they, they don't know if it's a, a call from someone at home or someone at the gate, so that creates another problem. So we also probably need to consider changing which phone, we have a special loud phone in there that's for, typically for emergencies, but we might want to consider doing that as well. So we make sure it gets everybody's attention that there's a parent at the door, so we'll look at that.
Great, and I appreciate that. The clanging of the gates that Miss Collins Rogers has, has identified on a couple of occasions, much better with the dampening?
Yeah.
So want to, simple fix?
Yeah, those installed, those are respect, those are in the original design, but they hadn't been installed until the painting was done. But they're all installed now.
All right, yeah, that's much improved. And, you know, there's sound dampening on these walls, but I've heard complaints from teachers that the stairwells and the hallways can be quite loud and also even the rooms above them. So I don't know if there's dampening, at least something like these in the, in the stairwells. Maybe we need some area rugs in, in some of the rooms to dampen the, the sound of the floors. But there might, you know, if, once we start decorating the halls a little more, I think that'll maybe help some, but-
That's possible. I, I, Mr. Baker may not have seen the email yet, but today I emailed Swinerton asking for a referral because the science labs, as, as great as they are in many ways, are, the acoustics are terrible. So we need an acoustical consultant to come back in and tell us what we can do because the sound is not working and we have some students with special needs around hearing, it is not working for-
In here, you're saying, or?
In our science, in our, in a couple of science labs. So we are going to have an acoustical consultant come back. I've asked Swinerton for a referral. I don't know if it should be the same one or not, depending on our feelings about it. But I need someone to come in and we can look at the hallways and stairwells as well.
Yeah, the, the labs, of course, I know about, but I, this, first I've heard about the stairwells being an issue, but make sure we add that to our list.
Yeah.
And the bandroom as well.
I'm sorry?
And the bandroom, since it's located, it's a little bit of an echo and I even heard it myself when roaming through the school facility. On the campus, you can definitely hear, not to say that Mrs. Salvatore isn't doing a great job with the students and their instruments, but it definitely can be a distraction to the other classrooms and then if there can be some type of, like you said, dampening to the walls in the bandroom as well because he's moved transition rooms from the beginning.
Yeah, he's here.
And so, yeah, it would be a little more efficient if it was to, you know, tune in the sound to the classroom itself.
Great, okay. Other questions for Mr. Baker?
So I do want to commend you on reaching out and letting me know about the, the gates. That was definitely something that was not only a hassle in terms of the hearing, but it definitely is a comfort setting, so thank you for that. And as we get to the bottom of the list, especially for you saying there was 3,000 punch list items and now there's 25, we can definitely see that in the atmosphere. But it's all fine and dandy on the outside, it's just a little bothersome that when you do go into the school campus that it's not as organized on the inside of the classrooms. A lot of the teachers are limited in access to storage and it's not, it's not something that they can hide. It's in plain eyesight, especially when I attended back-to-school night. A lot of the teachers' items are still in boxes, which cannot be comfortable in terms of their curriculum being prepared or for the atmosphere of the classroom itself. So if we can try to work on making sure that they do have proper storage, I know that's been a discussion item previously, but it's something that does need to be in place and immediately. And in terms of, like I said, the, the bandroom and the acoustics as well, there was one more thing. But that's just the basis, making sure that these teachers are organized so that their classrooms can be organized so these, these students can be comfortable. You don't want to have to sit in mayhem and then try to focus and that becomes a distraction because there's so many items around you that could be placed in a cabinet or some sort. And it's not just one or two classrooms, it's almost every one of them.
Okay, yes.
Just a quick comment, my husband actually, don't grab it. My husband actually rented a classroom over this past weekend to run a statewide judges gymnastics course, which doesn't really matter, but I spoke to many of those judges and everybody was just expressing how beautiful- which doesn't really matter, but I spoke to many of those judges, and everybody was just expressing how beautiful the school is, how nice it was to have, you know, a classroom in that kind of setting, to be able to use the smart board. So it was just a big highlight, and so I just wanted to share.
Great. Other questions or comments for Mr. Baker?
Oh, one more question. So on the outside area of the gymnasium, there are several basketball courts. I don't know if I've had a conversation with you or not, but there's so many basketball courts that one actually overrides the concession ticket sign. I was wondering if that was part of the plan, or if that was just implemented so that the kids could have some type of place, play area. But there are, I want to say about six basketball courts outside of a gym, which already includes basketball courts. And I know previously from the Emory that I attended, we had a tennis court and a batting cage in that area as well, which is now just basketball courts. So it's an overwhelming experience, although we know our kids do love basketball. But if there can be something that we implement to kind of broaden their horizons in terms of their playing structure.
I think there's, in terms of the physical space, it's relatively flexible. You could do some striping and things like that. It sounds like a lot of, kind of a programming, you have to program them. You know, that space is pretty simple, flexible space with striping. You know, if you wanted to, if you wanted to, for example, even remove a couple basketball hoops to reconfigure that space to a different type of use, you could do that at pretty low cost. I don't know the history in terms of why there were so many of those courts put in. I'd have to talk to DSK about that. But it's fairly configurable space out there. If you wanted to make some changes, it would be not that expensive to do that.
Yeah, that would probably need to take place. But thank you.
Are we in questions or discussion? Sorry.
Questions.
I'll wait for discussion.
Okay. Any public comment on this item?
Hello, Todd Ross, athletic director, Emory High School. Hey, I just had to comment on some of the things that we talked about, John. And some of the things I think we could do with the striping in that particular area could be something as simple as tetherball, four-square, hopscotch, make it a little more kid-friendly. And with the sound in the classrooms and the band area, what you need to probably use are sound traps. That's what I use in my studio. So sound traps will soak up most of the noise. It won't get rid of all of it, but it will help. Sound traps, and they're cheap.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other public comment? All right, discussion on this item? Mr. Patz?
So I came on Friday evening to the safety fair here and a movie. It was the second event I think we've been to in the quad. And Carolyn Laird, the city manager, was there, and so I took the opportunity to ask her about the flooring out here and whether or not we could put down striping or other activities for kids, because I think it had been mentioned that the city did not want that. And so in talking to her, she was really open to the idea, and so I just want to throw that out there. I think it'd be nice to have, if we're going to use this to play space, four-square, hopscotch. And it's not just a matter of painting lines nowadays. If you go to some really new playgrounds, what they're doing is incorporating images and themes that then have those linings within. So it's, you know, maybe four corners of the earth inside the four-square, or a path that is the hopscotch. And so I just, I'd love to see that out there as something that we can do so the kids have a play space. It was, it would be nice to have something much more kid-friendly and engaging, so I just wanted to share that with the board.
Good idea.
That sparked, a second idea to that might be a really cool project for an art class or an art club, to think of something that could incorporate those ideas.
Oh, yeah.
Another good idea?
Being as though it's Spirit Week, and we all know how festive our students, speaking from the past, like to be-
And some board members?
Yeah. You know, it's a passion. I've noticed that there isn't much area for decoration or bulletins, especially in the hallways. And that's something that we've done in the past. I know we don't have to do everything the same, but it would be nice to still have that energy, not only in the hallways, but so that it could trickle into the classroom as well. I mean, it's very uptight for these children, for there not to be any bulletin boards for any type of announcements, or, you know, any sales that are going on after school, or anything that might be going around on campus, or even, you know, city events, since we are, you know, in collaboration with one another. It would be nice to have some type of display boards or something that these children can actually lean into in the hallways that can actually make it a little bit more, like I'm going to consider, comfortable, because that's what these children need to be. They need to be comfortable on their school campus. So it would be nice to see something like that displayed or implemented in the near future.
All right. Thank you. Okay, any other discussions? This is just an update, not an action item, but I've had some good suggestions come up that I'm sure the superintendent will take under advice. All right, we are on to the second and final item under our action item for the evening. Interview questions for board applicants. We do have a board vacancy created by my impending departure. And we will be, maybe we can remind folks that the applications are due November, I want to say 16th? Twenty? Do you have it with the, no.
I'm sorry, member F, I don't know it by heart offhand. I'll pull up the list.
November 20th? Oh, the 20th? No, the, I think the interviews might be the 28th.
So Ms. Tamarie emailed me this today because I had some questions. So the application period closes, close of business, November, it looks like 16th to me?
Yeah, I think that's right.
And then we'll get the packets on the 17th. And then the 18th, we're having a special board meeting to finalize the interview questions. And then Monday, the 21st, candidates will be interviewed.
Monday, the 20?
Will be notified, sorry, and the interviews are the 30th.
Yeah. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Mr. Patz?
Sorry, I had to scroll over to get notified on the screen.
All right. So the, we're finalizing our interview questions later. This is, what, a preliminary round that we're, for tonight? The application is out, right?
Application itself is out with the questions. I think these interview questions, it's the pleasure of the board. You could endeavor to finalize them tonight if you so choose. And I think these, we accidentally attached the older version, I think in front of you have the questions from the last version, or last time we appointed a board member, so if you, Ms. Rogers. But if these questions, if everybody's happy with these questions, you know, it's up to you if you want to make those changes and if you want to endeavor to finalize those this evening.
I would, they look pretty, pretty good. They're still fairly recent, since we used them in January, in February. I would add the, some version of the one that we put on the application about the, which I don't have in front of me, but the Audrey Miles question. What is your commitment to continuing the Emory Unified School District in its, in its current form? And why, or why don't you think that's important? Do we have any other?
I agree with you, President F L. Adding that, I'm sorry, adding that or revising one of the other questions, which would be associated with, which I can't really locate. So if you had question 10?
Tanner, I've, how come you have nine?
This is the one that, no, this is the one, the attachment that Ms. Tamarie sent. These are the old questions.
These are the old, I thought these were the new ones.
I think the paper version you have are the new ones, I believe.
Are they?
Paper versions.
So there's only eight, to clarify, there's only eight questions?
That's correct.
Was the paper version available to the audience?
Yes.
Awesome.
These look like the old questions. So were we resorting back to the original questions that are before us? Because the attachment that we have are questions that have not been discussed previously for an appointee?
They were an earlier version that I think the board used previously during an appointee process in the past. So we, they were accidentally attached by mistake.
Okay.
So your paper version is the last version the board chose to use with this process?
Yeah, I think the one that's the attachment, member Collins Rogers, was, I want to say, three or four years old.
Okay.
Not that we can't pull items from there if there's something that you like.
I think the hard copy version is a little bit more updated in terms of what's going on in our campuses.
Now, just to be fair to the prospective candidates, there's multiple questions that have four goals in mind listed. Have they been listed in the packet of information to the applicants?
They're not in the packet. They are on the website.
Okay.
We talked, we talked last time about giving them a copy in advance to make sure they're familiar with them.
I think we did do that.
And we did do that.
Yeah, and we did, yeah, so.
So we can do that. Yeah, so as the applicants apply, we'll give them a copy.
Maybe we should have a quiz on the LCAP, 100 odd-page LCAP, and see while they know it. Maybe we'll stick with the four goals.
I think we should see how many applicants we have first. I think let's, let's see how much thinning of the herd we need to do before we, we get there.
It's probably a good idea.
Yeah. When is your last day?
The, I sent you the letter, I sent it up board.
Yeah, I just don't have it in front of me.
Basically, the turnover of reorganization meeting in December.
Okay.
Which is the 14th, I believe.
Okay. And so I guess my question, because I, my question is, when are you going to step out of this process?
Well, I won't be voting on the candidate, so.
Yeah.
So that's, I'll step out when it comes to actually deciding who the person is.
So would that be at the screening portion, when we're screening through the applicants? I mean, it just seems to me the intent is that you're not part of the process, right?
The only restriction, my understanding from council, and I did ask this question, is that a board member continues to function in every respect as a board member, except one, who's said they're going to resign, and that is actually voting on who their replacement is. So there's no restriction on deciding what the questions might be, or what the process might be for who that person is.
And, you know, and what about deciding who gets interviewed? I mean, I would feel like that's sort of one way to limit the pool, right?
It's a fair question. I mean, that's not decide, that's not voting, that's deciding who gets interviewed. But I'm happy to ask council if there's any restrictions on that.
Yeah, I'd just like to be extra cautious on that.
Yeah. That's a fair point.
Can we run through the deadlines one more time for clarification, probing purposes for the public?
Oh, actually, open, open even.
Sorry.
Okay, so the notice went out on October 17th, and the applications were available on the 17th. And, if I turn sideways, I can read the whole thing at once. I'm old. So we'll decide on interview questions this evening. The application period closes on the 16th of November. The packets will be sent to us on the 17th of November. We decide on which applicants to interview on the 18th of November at a special board meeting, where we will also finalize the interview questions. And then we will notify the applicants on that Monday, the 21st. And then we will do a special board meeting on the 30th, where we'll do the interviews, and we may or may not decide on the appointment at that point. And if we do not decide, we'll decide at the regular scheduled meeting, which is Wednesday, December 7th.
I think it's a special meeting, the 7th.
Done, sorry.
A special meeting on the 7th?
All the rest are marked special. It did not, so. And I did not intend to throw you under the bus, Ms. Tamarie.
Yeah, special if needed.
Thank you for going over that again.
Yeah.
So are there any other thoughts on additional questions or questions to take off the list?
Ms. Tamarie, can you send that to all of us again, that list that I just read off? I think it's, it was.
If someone needs it sooner than my consent, it's also attached in the last one.
I know.
Okay, well, I think we have a, at least one tentative addition. Is that right? Or did you modify it, or just seconded?
It dovetails with your suggestion as far as the EC, EUSD continuing as is.
And we had consensus to send any applicant the four goals, right?
And, yes.
That, I think that's a whole brochure. I think that's just fair.
Yep. All right, and I would, I don't think we need formal action on this unless we can.
I don't think so. I just want to make sure. Was there another change besides the added question that I missed from Member Marion? I heard, I couldn't catch it all.
My request was just having to do the four goals.
Okay, no other changes. We have one added question.
Okay, and that, I think we should leave open the stated date of the November 18th to actually finalize the questions if further thoughts come to us.
Yeah, I think it also depends on the pool.
Right, exactly. Because that's, that's the date that we'll be deciding, the board will be deciding who is being interviewed on November 18th. And that's the same date that we will actually finalize the final, final list.
So we'll bring these questions back on the 18th as well?
Yeah, as amended.
Sure.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this item? All right. Seeing none, then we are on to any board reports or announcements. Any board reports or announcements?
Oh, tonight was senior night for the girls volleyball. They did fairly well. They did win. Excuse me, I don't remember their opponent, maybe Mr.? Realm Charter. So we want to congratulate our girls and the seniors for their job well done during the season. And so basketball is awaiting us, and we have track and everything else going on in progress, so we just want to commend the work of our student athletes.
Okay, thank you for that. Anything else?
They did. Excuse me. Just to speak in the microphone, our athletic director said that our cross-country team did very well on their meet as well. So big ups to them. Keep up the good work.
So I mentioned the, the safety fair and the movie night last week. And this Saturday at ECCL is the Harvest Festival again, not the school one, but the city's one. It's been moved into the gym. The rec director would be mad at me if I didn't make that announcement because of potential rain. And then I did see on Facebook the ad for it from the parents' organization. I was very excited to see that. We are a K-12, not K-8, though, on the, on the thing. It's a K-8, the only public school in Emeryville, so if we could, I don't remember who does that.
Pre-K, 12.
But it should be K-12. But I encourage people to come. I want to say it's 3:30 to 5:30. It should be kind of an exciting, fun event. I went last year and enjoyed ourselves, so, and that's it.
All right. Calendar review?
Yes, as Member Patz said, we have harvest in the park, in the gym, from 3:30 to 5:30 this Saturday. We have- We have our next city schools meeting on Thursday, November 3rd at 5:30 PM. We have our next regular board meeting on November the 9th here at 6:00 PM. And we have a special board trustees meeting on November the 18th at 6:00 PM.
All right. We're now going to adjourn this meeting to closed session. Thank you.